Happy New Year, everybody. I'm Steve Bajinski, this year's president of the Rotary Club in Nardonia Hills. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. And again, Happy New Year. Let's hope for a great 2021. With that being said, John, could you give us an invocation to bless this new year?
Sure, let's be in a humble spirit of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this gathering. We ask your blessing on this club and its mission in the coming year. Keep us safe and healthy. We ask special blessings today for the gift of life and the good work that they do. For those of us who are eating today during the meeting, give us, make this food, give us the strength that we need to fulfill your will. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thanks, John. Debbie, if you could pull the American flag up, we'll do our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Everyone, please join me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States.
America.
To the republic.
Which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. And our visiting Rotarians, our guests today, today we have Ken Fogel. We'll do some further introductions with him in a little bit. Thanks for joining us, Ken.
Glad to be here.
I have my daughter Amanda and lovely wife joining us today. Thanks for joining us. There is my wife. Does anybody else have some guests that are hiding in the background we don't see?
Hard to see Todd Stewart.
He's hiding in the background. All right. You can't hide. Casey, do you have anything in history for us today?
Yeah, I looked at a couple of things. So, three things. I picked out all of them happened today. So, it's a, it's a big day in history. First thing happened in San Francisco, January 5th, 1933, the construction of this bridge began. Anybody know the, the name of the bridge?
Golden Gate Bridge.
It's really interesting when you read about this is, one of the reasons they built it is they, they realized if you gave access to people north of San Francisco, how would it increase property value? So, they spent $35 million of money to increase property value for the people that owned the property north of the, of the city. So, those probably, it sounds like pretty powerful people live north of the city there.
Looks like it worked.
Yeah. There you go. On the 5th, in 1643, this is the first recorded, how do I say this? Legal. Well, I'm just gonna read it to you. I'm not, I'm not gonna make a guess. It's our first recorded legal divorce in the American colonies. Anne Clark of the Massachusetts Bay Colony, it was granted a divorce from her absent and adulterous husband, Dennis Clark. So, today was the recorded first divorce in the United States. Well, it was the colonies before the United States. So, today is the first recorded, so. I will make you guess this one, because you should know this one. January, January 5th, 1920, the New York Yankees announces this purchase of this heavy hitting outfielder. I think it was a pitcher at the time, too, from the Boston Red Sox. Anybody know who that was?
Babe Ruth.
Yeah, so that happened today. So, those are three things. All of them happened today.
The curse of the babe. Hey, I had one more, too, that I, being a businessman, Henry Ford astonished the world by doubling a minimum wage from $2.50 to $5 an hour. Or actually, $5 an hour, $5 per day.
Yeah.
But this was the kicker, and this is why I wanted to mention, I thought it was pretty funny. There was a little, you had to meet a bonus requirements to get the extra $2.50 a day. You had to abstain from alcohol and gambling. Immigrant workers had to learn English and take classes to become Americanized. Not physically abuse their family, keep their homes clean, not take in boarders, and men's wives could not work outside the home.
Wow.
To get that extra $2.50 a first day. That was tight to well these days.
You think he was safe in offering that?
It'd be, it'd be interesting to know how many people took him up on it. So, that was pretty. And we do have some, a couple of birthdays this week. Tony Dunlap, January 7th. Happy birthday to Tony. And Dave Pritish, January 7th also. So, happy birthday to Dave. And my lovely wife Debbie, January 2nd, last Saturday.
Thank you.
Birthday to Debbie.
And she got a truck for Christmas or for her birthday?
You know, the funny thing, you see that GMC commercial when they go, because I love it. Debbie was pretty much doing that to me on Saturday.
You get the sunglasses?
I got these reading glasses. And we have some anniversaries for joining Rotary. Tim Ballas joined Rotary 30 years ago on January 1st. Congratulations to Tim. John Graves, John, 12 years, January 1st, 12 years ago. He's been in Rotary for 12 years. Vern Rutter, 30 years, January 1st. And Peggy Spragons, 26 years Peggy's been in Rotary, January 1st, she also joined. So, congratulations to all our Rotarians that have been a part of our club for such a long time. Thank you. Okay, humor of the day. Do we have a humor of the day?
Yes, we do, President Steve. This one I got for today is kind of age specific, but when it came across my desk, I immediately had to think about John and Bill and Howard and Carl. So, the rest of you folks with gray hair, listen up.
Hey, I don't have any hair.
A little bit. The preacher came to call the other day. He said, "At my age, I should be thinking about the hereafter." I told him, "Oh, I do all the time, no matter where I am, in the living room, upstairs, in the kitchen, or down in the basement." I asked myself, "What am I hereafter?"
Not even funny.
Only because it's true, huh?
Oh, you bet. I walked out of my den. I couldn't remember why. You were getting coffee, we remember.
Yeah, you went for coffee, we all remember.
Well, I got it.
We'll help you out.
Okay.
All right, how about some happier sad dollars? I'll throw in a happy dollar. I'm happy for the Browns and Ohio State. They gave us a good weekend. I'm also happy about my wife's birthday. Anybody else have some happy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy. I had a hip injection today and some of my hip pain has been relieved temporarily. So, that's good. And bad is Kevin Stefanski has COVID.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, yeah, I just, just saw it.
Oh, boy.
Yep. Well, maybe they'll, maybe he'll be good. Who knows?
For a week.
It can zoom in.
Yeah, that's it. You better believe it, they'll do that.
Wow.
I have a.
That's gonna be a challenge for both the Browns and Ohio State this week, is staying away from that.
I have a happy dollar. I, Girl Scout cookie season started January 1st, and that means that my mailbox started to fill up with solicitations from girls to please buy cookies from them. I hope some of you will take the, take the burden off me and, and buy some during the next few months during the season.
Very good.
Yeah, I always know when that season happens, John, because I have a lot of employees that their daughters are Girl Scouts, and so I have a lot of young girls visiting my office.
I've placed my order online already from one, and I anticipate to place again when we, when they're delivered and we eat them, and then I need more.
Yeah, if you ordered on the first, they're on their way, because I already got confirmations. They're coming by FedEx.
Can you, can you send out an order form or anything?
I, I'll tell you what, once the troop links start in February, each troop has their own website. I will send those out in, I don't sell cookies, I just buy them. So, so the girls sell cookies. So, I'll send out, I'll send out links in, in in February.
That'll be great. Thank you.
All right.
I have half a happy dollar.
Yeah.
I have a house that I built that's 37 years old. We found that one of the bathroom toilet pipes was improperly installed and just started leaking. I now have two ceilings tore up. Well, I gotta find somebody to put the holes back together.
Well, the good news is it lasted for 30 years.
Let me tell you. I was lucky because it had done a lot of leaking. We thought we were gonna see rotted wood, but nothing. So, just bad. So, that's fixed, but it wasn't cheap.
Well, good luck with that, Howard.
That's what you call a good leak.
Yeah.
Now it is.
I have a happy dollar, or happy Zoom, or I don't know what we're calling it now. Since last meeting, I had my birthday, which was super cool, and my husband surprised me. We went to, we've been, we're really COVID lockdown. So, we went to a cool Airbnb near Amherst. It was really neat. I'm gonna post the link in the comments, because you just have to look at the pictures. It's very peculiar, but very fun. And if you get a chance, you need to go, because it's, there's just so much to look at.
Sounds good, Paige. I'm sure Debbie's gonna be pulling that up. Anybody else? All right, thank you. With that being said, let's move on to our featured speaker today. Today, we welcome Ken Fogel. Ken's an architect living in South Russell with his own practice in Shaker Square, Cleveland. Ken has two adult children with families living in Rockville, Maryland, and Wilmington, North Carolina, and five and a half grandchildren raised, ranging from minus four months to 24 years. So, you have one expecting. Is that what you're telling us?
Absolutely, bun in the oven.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ken is a past president of the Sagrin Valley Rotary Club. He's been a member since the mid 90s. Past chair of the District Group Study Exchange Program, 10 years. Current chair of Gift of Life Northeast Ohio for 10 years, and part of the original founding, founding for 6330 in 2003. He's also a past assistant governor. So, please join me in welcoming Ken Fogel.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I appreciated John inviting me to do this, and I put together an outline, so I tried to get an overview, so everybody gets a sense of what Gift of Life is about. I told people in the past, I can give you five minutes or five hours, whatever you want, just because it's become such a all encompassing, life consuming volunteerism. How many of you by show of hands are familiar with Gift of Life, know about what we do? Okay, a couple of you. I'll, okay, that tells me where to start then. First of all, I'll start with, we're Rotary International, and previously Rotary used to have the four avenues of service to structure each club, and one of them was international. And it was through group study exchange. I knew nothing of Rotary and got involved by becoming a candidate for, and then receiving the selection to become a group study exchange member. And Rotary sent me to the Philippines and spoke to, I don't know how many clubs, but spoke 26 times in 23 days to Philippine Rotary Clubs. And if you want to learn a little bit about Rotary, do one of those. You get immersed. So, and the international has been my focus since I've been in Rotary and how we keep our clubs engaged. And if you want to see the power of Rotary, do an international project, and you'll see how great it is to have leverage around the world through credibility by being a member of this organization. So anyhow, through international, our Rotary Foundation uses our dollars to leverage grants. And one of the things that makes these things work so well is it requires clubs on both ends of the international grant to be dollar participants and sign in, and every dollar gets leveraged one, or four to one. So, you can really make a significant grant process out of an effort by using the, the foundation global grant process or the vocational training team process, both of which we've used. So, Gift of Life is focused on children's hearts. And you would kind of question why we would do children's hearts and where that comes from. But the statistics are, one in every child born anywhere in the world is born with some kind of heart defect. And for those of you who have gray hair like me, you may remember as kids hearing about blue babies, which you never hear about anymore, because in the United States, that child born with a defect is fixed. It's just done and it's taken care of, perhaps even before they're born. In the developing world, they may not discover it till that child dies as to why they died. There's just no access to heart care. And as we get later in the program, there's some other reasons why it makes sense to be focused there. So, with Gift of Life itself, the international organization began as one club in Long Island, one guy in Long Island, who received the call from a friend of his in Africa saying, "I got this child that needs heart surgery. Can you help us?" And so, Gray Sagaru from Uganda ended up being the first child brought into New York by Robbie Dono, who is a, basically was a garbage man on Long Island, who was an active Rotarian, and said, "We can do this. We've got the resources." So, that began it. And Gift of Life basically did one child at a time, each time the opportunity came up. And there was, you know, good for that kid, but not doing much else for anybody else. That went on for years and years. Our district didn't get involved until 2002. And past District Governor Jim Frame got a call from his counterpart in New Jersey, Northern New Jersey. I forgot their district number. I got it written here somewhere. But anyhow, the gentleman called Alan Feen from New Jersey and said, "We've got a child. We're willing to sponsor. Needs heart surgery, but you guys stole our doctor." So, we learned that Dr. Hanine had been practicing in New York City and had come to Rainbows and Babies in Cleveland to become head of pediatric cardiothoracic surgery, which I couldn't even say before Gift of Life, and now say it all the time. And so, they asked us if we could help. Jim's answer, as it always is, is, "I'll try. I'll do the best I can." So, because of previous work on group study exchange, Jim gave me a call when he got this call and said he needed help, and let's get this kid done. And that began Gift of Life for District 6630, basically raising $5,000 in an arrangement we had with Rainbow Babies and Children's to cover consumables for a surgery. And that was pretty much what the hospital asked from us. So, with each kid, we would go out and, you know, basically beg, borrow, and steal until we got the $5,000 and covered the kid. And then whatever else we needed to get them down at Rainbow Babies and Children's where they used to stay. And we were doing, just like Gift of Life on Long Island was doing, one child at a time, as the hospital would accept it, and basically doing something fantastic for that child and their extended family, but not much else. Very questionable sustainability in that, that process. Our first child was Yusuf Abdel Malik. And to give you an idea what that child was going through, that child, Yusuf is Joseph. Abdel Malik means of the angels. He was from Egypt, and Dr. Hanine's heritage was Egypt, so he had a particular focus there. And Yusuf was seven months old, and he weighed seven pounds. And for any of you who know a newborn baby, seven pounds is even small, and he was seven months old. That's because his life choices were to breathe or to eat. Once he nursed, he couldn't breathe. He'd go blue and had some pretty severe defect. So, Yusuf, I saw five years ago, and he was a, I want to say he was probably 12, 13, something like that, and quite hefty, chunky little kid. So, he's doing fine. But anyhow, we went through that process and basically for eight years with Rainbow Babies and Children's, did over 50 kids, and now for the last 10 years with Akron Children's Hospital, have done another 10 kids here in the United States. And that was really our focus. We've, through that period, involved more than 20 different countries around the world, developing world, where there is no cardiac care at all. And involved every religion known to man, Muslim, Muslim to, we had a Mormon, believe it or not, from Ecuador. But it was quite interesting. So, we had all religions, all makes and models of people. And again, doing one child at a time, had a great time playing with kids down at Rainbow Babies as they came in and doing the surgeries that way. Over time, we began to realize that really wasn't sustainable. There's goal of, you know, getting out there and scrambling to raise $5,000 and hitting up different clubs all over the district. We've had more than half the clubs in the district support various children. But it became pretty clear that wasn't the way things were gonna work. Saving one child at a time is a great thing, but not gonna make it happen. So, we changed our policy. In 2003, at the very early stages, when we were getting together, we got together with the guys in Long, in Long Island. And the other, there was about 12 Gift of Life programs, and informed Gift of Life International to be an umbrella to try and help guide and direct us. And in about 2009 or 10, I want to say it was, we restructured what we were doing to a new model, and that model was to teach, train, and equip. And for Northeast Ohio, we are perfectly positioned to help in terms of teaching, training, and equipping the skill sets in the developing world to provide for their own. And so, later in this program, I'll show you a little video, and you can see some of the things that we've had impact on. But under that new program, I'll give you just a brief history of our first overseas action to follow the new model was with a, a doctor named Ahmed Farouk, who became a good friend of mine. He was here at Case Western University, getting his PhD in education. Ahmed was a pediatric cardiothoracic surgeon in Egypt, in Osuute, Egypt, which is the Ohio State of Egypt. It's a huge teaching hospital in the middle of the country with thousands of students. It's, it's very large. And he was here getting his doctorate in education, because you made more as a professor than you did as a pediatric cardiothoracic surgeon in Egypt. So, he was here to learn how to teach. While he was here, he got involved with Gift of Life kids that were coming in, and he basically asked if he could do this in his own country, and we said absolutely. And we went to the resource of MedWish International. For those of you who know MedWish, they take all the surplus hospital stuff. Every time UH or Cleveland Clinic brings in a new doc who wants the newest, latest, greatest piece of equipment that he wants, the old equipment has to go somewhere. So, MedWish takes it. Most of it is good. So, between Ahmed and myself and our club, we put together a container of equipment and sent it to Osuute University and set up their first children's heart center at Osuute. And the pediatric cardiothoracic surgery department now had the capability through a heart lung machine and a bunch of other stuff we sent over there to do surgeries. So, that, that process began with just a connection between people, one-on-one. And the great part of that program was, it turned out the president of Osuute University happened to be the president of the Osuute Rotary Club. And his, I think it was his cousin, was the head of the health department in Cairo. And one of their uncles was the head of transportation at ports in Alexandria. So, in terms of using a Rotary grant, we had partners in place, and we had transportation all the way from Cleveland to the hospital, all covered by Rotarians. And everything worked with, as they say in most countries, no dash on the line. You didn't have to pay anything to get across the border. It went. So, everything worked, and it worked by Rotary. That process led to, I got here in 2012, the statistics, I had 294 open heart cases. 41 of them done with our teaching and training team using Dr. Novak, International Children's Heart out of Tennessee, that we funded using global grants. They weren't global grants, but using Rotary International grants to do that. Included 300 catheterization, and so almost 600 children were done, mostly by Egyptian medical teams with the training for the more complex under a Tennessee put together team by Dr. Novak. So, that was our first experience of doing this, and it was a home run. It was absolutely fabulous. As most of the world knows, as the world goes, politics got into the way, and the Arab Spring hit and completely cut us off from any interconnection with them. They had no internet for like six months, where there was no communication, no capability. So, that kind of got put on hold. But Egypt is kind of a unique situation, that there's extremely high skills, extremely low resources. So, the capability was in the people, but the ability to deliver and do wasn't there. And so, this partnership was fantastic. In 2016, and I'm gonna stay with Cairo before I jump to Haiti, but those are the two countries that are our key focus. In 2016, Gift of Life International Chair, Rob Reilman and myself, went back to Egypt to try to reconnect us to Osuute and he to Aswan, where he was involved with Chain of Hope out of London that had a similar type program going. And we flew into Cairo, and the first night we were in Cairo, we're sitting in the hotel, planning our trip up the, or actually down the Nile, you go south there, opposite of the Mississippi. And we get a phone call, Rob got a phone call from a person who introduced herself as the district governor for Cairo and asked if they could have dinner with us. And it turned out that the Gift of Life Cairo that was formed back in the late 90s still existed, and we had no idea it was there. And they had heard from one of our patients at Rainbow that we were in town. And so, they got together and said, "Could we do something together? Can we do a global grant?" And out of that, and there's a lot of stories that go with it, but out of that, I'll jump right to the end, is we just closed our third global grant with them last week. And they did, I got the statistics of that. Last grant, they did 60 children. Forty-six or seven of them were open heart surgeries. The other were catheter procedures that avoid open heart surgery at an average cost of $3,000 a child. To give you some sense of scale of what that means, it's the children we bring into Akron Children's, which we've been doing to a year, and averages about $150,000 a child. So, you can see what impact we can have by partnering around the world and using our resources in a localized teaching, training, and equipping process to allow many more children to be done and to allow the skill sets to be built within country. So, that's kind of recapping Egypt. I'm gonna jump over to 2009 now to give you our other area of focus right now, or country of focus for our Gift of Life. And that's into Haiti. And I may need some help here, but I'm gonna do a screen share. First, I'll just give you a little background on this. This is Dr. Jeff Kemp, who's now a member of the Akron Rotary Club, was not a Rotarian back in, in 2010, but in January 2010, he responded to a request from a Catholic sister who was in Haiti, who had grown up in Akron, asking for Akron Children's for some help after the earthquake. So, he went into Port-au-Prince, discovered a hospital still standing called St. Damien's that had just been completed, maybe six months earlier, by an Italian group, and it survived the earthquake, and that became the triage center as they dealt with an absolutely massive death and destruction, trying to get some sense of semblance to care for people who are in absolute distress. Out of that, a lot of discussion came with how can Akron Children's partner with St. Damien's to improve the quality of healthcare in Haiti? And I would say I'll jump through it fast, but Jeff was doing some speaking around the world, and he happened to have relationship in Naples, Florida. So, he was speaking at a Rotary Club in Naples, and after they talked, he said, "I got a kid that needs heart surgery. Does anyone have any resources I can help?" And one of the Rotarians said, "Well, we've got a Gift of Life program here, but why don't you use yours in Cleveland?" He didn't know he had one. So, Jeff gave me a call, and together we went and met with Bill Considine, who's the president of Akron Children's, because I did not want to start a relationship without the president being bought in. And sat down with Bill, and I said, "Why Haiti? It's a basket case. Why do you want to deal with it?" And his comment was relationships. That sister that called grew up in his block in his neighborhood as a kid, and she asked for his help, so he's gonna give it. So, that was it. And out of that, we started into Haiti. And so, I'm gonna do a screen share now and try and go into a video. And Debbie, I expect you to bail me out when this fails. So, we'll see how it works. So, that says I'm doing the screen share. I gotta make sure I do sound. And I optimize my screen share. And then I hit the share button. And that looks like your email. That looks good. So, I'll close that off. Close that off. Hopefully, you saw my granddaughter sitting in my brother's Corvette.
Most of the children of the world do not have access to any kind of cardiac care, and one in 100 kids is born with some kind of heart defect. In our country, on birth, we fix it, but there are no pediatric cardiothoracic surgeons in Haiti.
About 500 children are born every year with some kind of congenital abnormalities in the heart. And they need specialist care that is not available at all in the country. What does that mean? And they need specialist care that is not available at all in the country. What does that mean? The implications? High mortality rate and mostly for children, the most vulnerable population out of vulnerability, if I may say.
Those are children in great need. Children who deserve a chance alive.
And you have no idea what that child's capacity is going to be and what they're going to become. So our opportunities to open doors for people who have capacity is what Gift of Life is about.
In the world, we have to share capacity. One nation is great at this. One nation is great at that. One nation is great, greater. And another thing, we have to share capacity. A richness shared is a real beautiful goal as a human family.
Gift of Life's primary purpose is to deal with repairing children's hearts in the developing world. When Gift of Life began, we were bringing children from Haiti and from other parts of the world into Cleveland and into have surgery at Rainbow Babies and Children's University Hospital. We could do one or two children a year. And that's great for those families and for that kid, but it does nothing for when they go back home. So we're beginning to slowly turn over the skill set to local Haitian team to be able to do what needs to be done.
We have brought back about 20 Haitians for training in our hospital, all sponsored to Gift of Life Northeast Ohio and Rotary International.
They've done this twice now where they've come to Akron for extended stays, working on children's hearts while they're in Akron.
I feel benefits, I feel experience. I'm a little bit afraid, I'm afraid of, I feel bad I'm with, I'm a little bit afraid of, I feel bad I'm a virgin, I'm a little bit scared of you. By the way, I'm so tired, I'm so tired of you, I'm so tired of you.
Their abilities to do more offer them opportunities to look to do more, to help others in healthcare areas.
Currently, for instance, thanks to Gift of Life, one of the pediatricians of St. Damien's is studying to become the first pediatric cardiologist of the country.
It's very, very important to have a pediatrician in cardiology to see this patient. Because we have a lot of children that who have cardiopathy, congenital cardiopathy. And we don't have doctors who can care of this patient.
Our goal is for Haitians to provide a healthcare to Haitians so that we're not the healthcare providers. We're enabling the local healthcare community to be able to do more for their own.
We're going to help a lot of children and we're going to save a lot of lives. And we have no enough words to say thank you.
We're always here, we're always here, we're hospitalized. And we're happy, we're happy. And we appreciate that you're here for us. And we're happy for you, we're happy for you. In a way, it's just sad, it's horrible for us, it's hard to face.
It's unbelievable how much that we've achieved in such a short time. We're so far ahead of where we thought we'd be because of the local skills and then the local desire to make things happen and our ability to just kind of support what they want to do. It's really working well. It's extraordinary. This is good stuff. Our effort here is that we're trying to empower Haitians to serve Haitians. We're not trying to empower us. This is not about us doing a good deed. This is about us facilitating their ability to do what they're capable of.
So I hope that worked. I can't tell because I couldn't see. So did you all see the film? Yeah, it worked. It worked good. Okay, good. So in looking at that film, that was mostly filmed in the PICU unit at St. Damien's Children's and in the hallways outside. It's obviously an open-air hospital. Not many surgery suites you see in the US with jealousy windows. Quite a different monitoring of air and control of the environment. But all that equipment, the heart lung machines, the ability to function within that ICU and the surgery suite is related to things, not only our Gift of Life has done, but Gift of Life New York, Gift of Life International, Gift of Life Gato La Vie in Port-au-Prince, Haiti. And just, well, I'm thinking the Milan team, the surgical team that's in there now is all out of Milan. At the time, we had mostly US. Most of the people you saw there were Akron Children's. We've done a series of vocational training team exchanges, which was mentioned in the film. That film is four years old. Dr. Noisette is Haiti's first pediatric cardiothoracic, or excuse me, pediatric cardiologist. She's not a surgeon. And she is practicing out of St. Damien's and has a mix of donating through St. Damien's and private practice for those who can sustain her and support her. In addition to that, another Rotary Club had now funded the training of a pediatric emergency room. I forget what they call them. It's like an interventionist, but it's a emergency room doc specialist, which is pretty important since most healthcare is emergency crisis healthcare coming to St. Damien's because they are the only children's hospital in all of Haiti. And unfortunately, once again, I'll bring up politics, but the lovely politics of Haiti shut us down last February, not because of COVID, but because of violence. We had to get our team out of there. Dr. Frichette, that runs St. Damien's, has been there for 30 some years. Basically wanted the team out because he didn't feel we could keep them safe. So the Italians went home, the French went home, and the Americans went home at that time. It was a mixed team from around the world. We hope to get back into Haiti. We are trying right now to bring a child into Akron Children's. We still bring in two a year. Hopefully with the ability to bring Haitians along with it, so the training continues. Right now, unfortunately, Akron Children's has shut down the ability to do that because of the demands on their resources for the COVID vaccine. So COVID's screwing up the world. That's kind of an overview. I've got about five minutes left of the time slot you set up for me, John and Debbie. I wanted to open to questions, but I'll say one last thing that Dr. Kemp, you saw there speaking, is now a rotarian at Akron Children's and he's organized a group called the St. Damien's Collaborative. And we now have 11 US children's hospitals who are partners with St. Damien's doing their own expertise in the same way we're doing children's hearts. So the teaching, training, and equipping is having a major impact on this country that did not have the capability of doing this three, four years ago. So opening up to questions and anything else you'd like to know about Gift of Life?
Thank you, Ken. Boy, the whole thing is just totally remarkable. I mean, thank you for all the work you've done and it is amazing, totally amazing. Anybody got any questions for Ken?
God, you guys are easy.
Hey Ken, how do you hit all the logistics of getting the people over from the foreign countries, airfare, housing, food here while their kids are recovering?
We raise money and we raise it all the time and our partners raise money and we don't, everything we do in our district, what I try to do is Gift of Life has a codicil that we established several years ago. So we have a core pool of dollars that generates monies. We also then go to clubs and raise monies. And then we use those for grants and all the process. So bringing people here for teaching and training is through vocational training team grants. So we'll put in, we may put in $5,000 or $10,000 into that and leverage it out to an $80,000 or $90,000 grant with other Gift of Life programs, with other districts. We, I think I mentioned earlier, we probably had more than half the clubs in the district contribute at one point or another to a Gift of Life. As I said, we got a kid on hold right now. We're trying to get in that we were looking for a little help from Lakewood, Rocky River in their granting process, but I'm not thinking that's going to come through. So we're looking at that. But when they come here, the hardest part seems to be working out visas and travel criteria. Haiti will not allow, in most cases, will not allow the parents to come with their child. So if you're a mom and you can imagine turning over your sick child to someone else to take to some other country to have their chest cracked open and hope that they come back. That's faith and that's an absolute trust in the resources locally that have told them, this is your child's only chance for life. So from Haiti, we'll usually have a guardian come with them. Sometimes it's been either Dr. Ellen or Dr. Jeff Kemp, who will fly down to Haiti and bring them back at their own cost, acting as the host. And the other part of that is getting our state department to bless things, which we've got good relationships in Haiti now. We had good relationships in Egypt, but Egypt has changed a little bit on us. We are not in Osuute at all anymore because the Muslim Brotherhood drove Rotary out of Osuute. So there is no Rotary there anymore. And without a partner, we can't do granting. So that's why we're really focused on Cairo and they have good relationships. So they help with all that process of exchange. Most of the time though, it's us sending people in as part of a global grant. Does that answer your question, Dave? I'm not sure I got it all.
You did.
Okay, good.
Hey Ken, I remember maybe 15, 20 years ago, when I first heard about Gift of Life, Jim Framan, you would come to meetings with some of the children.
Yes.
If the child was here at Rainbow Babies and Children with their parents, you would actually bring the child into the Rotary meeting. And that was just so, so powerful. Obviously, we can't do that now. The other thing is you talked about global grants. Is our district partnering with clubs now across the world with global grants? And if so, are you, are you looking for other clubs in the district to sponsor global grants?
Yes, 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 and yes. Any, any resources that we have presented, we'll find a way to apply them and leverage them to make them make $1 a lot more. To start with the beginning of your comment of bringing the children to clubs, that was really powerful for us in communicating what we're doing. Unfortunately, now and then into the future, particularly with the children from Haiti, which is where the relationship with Akron Children's is, they don't stay long. They're here, if they come healthy, which they have to do because our country won't let them in if they don't. They try and turn them around. Seven days, basically. They go from open heart surgery to flying home. And it's amazing with young children how fast they bounce back. When we were doing it at Rainbow's before, the thinking was that they would stay a lot longer and we tended to have a week or two, maybe three after surgery before they went home. So that gave us time to go around when the kids were healthy. The last child we had here from Haiti, I would say was three days after surgery, he went home. And you know, it's just amazing, but first of all, Haiti's a lot closer, so the flight is not 15 hours. And second, we have private resources that can also help us when we can't get commercial flights to do that because there's a particular individual that flies to Florida quite often, who's been interested in participating. So they are our auxiliary backup when we have to move. But yes, we're always looking for support and help that if you, if you want to have international participation, this is a way to do it. The difficulty with this is it's hard to participate physically because most of you are probably not going to want to go to Haiti with me. I'll tell you, I had one of my college classmates go with me on the last trip and he said, don't worry about me. I know third world countries. I've been to Mexico. And as we drove on the bus from the airport to the hospital, he never said a word. And we got to the hospital and he said, I had no idea. The poverty in this world is unbelievable. And the poverty in Haiti as the most poor country in our hemisphere is beyond belief. No housing, no water, no power, no transportation, no school. I mean, for the majority, it's, you know, $500 a year is a wealthy person. It's just a real difficult country.
If I can ask a question, what is the Haitians, the government's problem with letting parents go with their children? Are they afraid they won't come back?
That's part of it, which is also part of our state department's worry is they do not want people coming here and staying. The purpose is for medical treatment. The other thing is there's a distrust, I guess, in Haiti that there's been so much help, if I can put that in quotes, from around the world that has been so destructive to Haiti that they're just very hesitant. If you think the recent outbreak of cholera in Haiti as a result of the earthquake was as a gift of the UN. They brought it in through Nepalese soldiers who were supporting the UN movement. I went to the grocery store in Port-au-Prince and I watched a couple of Canadian MPs peeling off $100 US bills to buy their groceries because they just got paid to a Haitian community that would never see a $100 bill. So it skews the economy totally towards UN personnel. You think of all the help that the Clinton Foundation did. Now, this is going to sound political, but they made this humongous donation of rice for two and a half years to the Haitians, basically long enough to assure all the Haitian rice farmers were put out of business and then we stopped donating. So the Haitians are very, very leery of how we help. And that's why what I think we're doing with the idea of teach, train, and equip is so well received because what we're doing is putting the value and the benefits into Haitian people to deliver for their own. That's why I think it works.
Um, I have a question. So when, you know, a child is sent here for surgery and then returned, or even, you know, a child that has surgery there, what does the follow-up care look like?
So Gift of Life International has put together a whole follow-up protocol that has to be bought into before we'll do any of this. And that's again, the reason for teach, train, and equip. We now have a pediatric cardiologist in Port-au-Prince, Haiti that follows up with every one of these kids. She sets the schedule. When we have a visiting surgical team in, she does all the echo, she does all the assessment, she presents all the cases for the surgeons to decide what they're doing. So her skill set, serving her people in her country, earning her living, gives forever. So and as far as if additional surgeries are needed, we just finished our fourth surgery on one of the children we did here at Rainbow Babies who had just the most complex situation. We probably shouldn't have taken her, but she's alive. And so she had an upside down and backwards heart from the way she was born, everything working in reverse. And she had two surgeries in the US, one in Osuute, Egypt, and the last one was done, I think, in Switzerland. And she's now back home. She's 14 or 15 now. So once you're a Gift of Life child, you're a Gift of Life child for life.
Sure. Also, like, are, is, I guess more towards Haiti, but are they equipped for like additional therapies? Like physical therapy, occupational therapy regarding like some of those children?
So with St. Damien's, yes. And that's again, been part of the, the training team we had here. I mean, you saw all those people. We had doctors, nurses, pharmacists, biomedicals. We had a materials management logistics person. The idea is all those support pieces, including, you know, with heart surgery, there's respiratory therapy and physical therapy afterwards. Those things all go with it. So yes, that's part of, with each of these children, they get a follow-up plan. There's also follow-up health and diet because Dr. Frichette is an extraordinary person, Father Frichette. He is also Dr. Frichette. But he, he made the comment, as he said, you know, a lot of people hesitate helping this child because you see him playing in a cesspool outside and you know, he's going to get sick again next week. But that child's standing in front of you and needs the help and we can do it. So we do it with the hopes that they'll also learn how to deal with quality of water, quality of sanitation, quality of life. So that's, the Gift of Life goes well beyond hearts. And that's again, you know, a lot of people have questioned, why would you focus on hearts? But if you do hearts, the teaching, training, and equipping you do applies in so many other ways and all the support team that goes with it. Our surgical suites down there, they don't do heart surgery on their own because there are no cardiothoracic surgeons for kids in Haiti. So only when our teams come in do they do the surgeries. But they do surgeries and now they have surgical suites and ICUs that can support that. So it's, it multiplies many times over from the one kid we do as opposed to before. The kid we were bringing in may do something great when he goes back to his country, but we never knew. Now we track and follow and stay with them because of the local contacts. Again, the power of Rotary. We have rotarians everywhere and they, you go in with credibility and they maintain themselves with credibility. So it works.
How long does it take to train? One of the locals?
Well, in this case, all of them are medical doctors. Depending on where they train, they still have a skill set, whether it was in Haiti or, for example, with Dr. Noisette, who became the pediatric cardiologist. She was already a practicing doctor. She wanted to go into this area, so she ended up doing her first year in Martinique in a relationship we had with a Gift of Life program there. And then her second year, we, our role was we paid for her housing and a hospital in France paid for her second year of training and residency in pediatric cardiology. So she spent 18 months in Paris away from her family. She had three kids and a husband at home and away from her practice in Haiti. And then she went back with a contractual obligation to remain with St. Damien's for at least six years. And my guess is she's there for life. So that's, that's the timeframe. I mean, she was two and a half years in the pediatric cardiology training and six years mandated that she'll practice at St. Damien's. The other part I'd say about that, Carl, is that Akron Children's, one of the guys that's a pediatric cardiologist there is a traveling teacher for people using various catheter procedures to avoid open heart surgery. So she's being trained in some of these procedures that allow kids to be served without the surgery, which the surgeons don't like, but the cardiologists do.
Thank you, Ken. I, with your permission, I'd like to give everyone your email so if they have any other questions for you, they can contact you directly. But again, I think it opens everybody's eyes on what Rotary can do, not only locally, but internationally. And it is really, really phenomenal.
I thank you for the opportunity to do it. I love sharing it. So I appreciate it.
And we're going to ask you back again, Ken. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Just a couple of quick announcements. Dave has a announcement regarding our reverse raffle, everybody?
Well, as we all know, with these times, we've gone virtual on our reverse raffle. So it's going to change the whole format. And in this process, my wife actually came up with the idea the other night and I threw it past Steve yesterday because we're getting our proofs made up for the tickets. And she says, why are you rushing for February 6th when you're changing the format? You only have four weeks to sell all the tickets, which made a lot of sense. So Steve and I did some quick brainstorming yesterday and came up postponing February 6th to March 6th. So I have the proof done. I've, I've sent it out to the, I, I'm not sure that it was all the board members, but I just clicked on a bunch of board members and sent it out. I'm going to get back to Kempton and get the tickets printed. They should have it out to me tomorrow. And I'll begin distribution of tickets. So anybody interested, I will deliver them to you and we need to get them out, get them sold. Unfortunately, we can't do it virtually to get the tickets out. We have to put them out, but you'll see on the ticket, it's new. It says name and phone number and email. Please print clearly. Very critical that I'm able to get the email information because we're going to create a Zoom virtual reverse raffle that will have live, I'm assuming it's going to be Zoom, but it may be some other format that we, we have to get together and kind of brainstorm how we're going to do this and how we're going to make it interesting to encourage everybody to jump on board.
How much are tickets?
It's been reduced to $50. They were $75 in the past. Seeing that we knocked out the caterer and meal, we reduced the cost to 50. Through the process, after prize money going out, we're anticipating if all 200 tickets are sold, that we would raise 7,800, which is a huge difference from last year. I believe we're around $12,000. So, you know, that's assuming, we talked about getting a key person in to maybe auction something off. We're still looking at that and brainstorming to attract more people and possibly raise a little bit more money. So, sorry about that.
Are you going to try to do sideboards or not?
If we can figure out, I, I'm not sure how to do that. So if we can figure it out, yes, we'll do sideboards. If we can do bingo cards, that means whoever's on the Zoom would have to be able to respond to us through a chat to a key person when they get bingo. Yeah, so we have to do some brainstorming. I figured we need a little more time to figure this out. So that's why we postponed it till March 6th.
So it just seemed like a good idea that, that's like, why give ourselves just four weeks? Let's, let's move it out to March 6th. Give ourselves more time to figure this all out so we can make this as profitable as we can since it's been more and more difficult for us to have fundraisers this year. We want to make sure that this one's as successful as possible. So it just made sense and I think everyone will agree. So the new date for our reverse raffle is going to be March 6th instead of February. So we'll keep everybody posted. We're going to be having some meetings regarding this and really start hammering away at this and see what we can put together.
And John Bosco, I did reach out to Bob Oborn to get his input because they had a virtual reverse raffle back in November and I want to know the pros and cons that they ran into so we can enhance our program.
So when you talk to Bob, sell him a ticket.
Yeah, John bought one. I saw you on the list. They, they were, just to give you a feel for the difference in reverse raffles, their tickets were $100 a ticket. They sold 150 tickets. They were sold out according to the list that I saw. And John, did you go on it virtually at all? How was it?
I did not, Dave. I forgot about it, actually. Oh, I didn't win.
Okay, but yeah. So I'm, I haven't had a response from Bob yet, but I just sent that out this morning. I should have something here soon.
Okay. Any more questions on the reverse raffle? Okay, so we'll keep you posted on what's going on with that. Dictionaries for the third graders, still in the process of labeling them, but we'll get that all wrapped up and working with the schools on how we're going to distribute that. I'll be talking to Joe Clark and Aaron, who was the principal over at St. Barnabas, how we're going to get those distributed or how they want to distribute them and we'll get those over to them as soon as we get them all finished. Our next regular meeting is, will be next week at January 12th. And Kevin Buck of Care Patrol is going to speak, so we're looking forward to that. Our next board meeting is January 15th via Zoom. All is welcome to attend. Also, please keep our longtime and fellow Rotarian Paul Jackson in your prayers. Paul's been in the hospital for a few days. He is battling COVID right now. But he's doing well. We got, they said he's responding well to the medicine, but please keep Paul in your prayers. Let's see. I think that's all I got for you. Does anybody else have anything to, to add? All right, then please join me in our four-way test. Debbie, could you please pull that up? Thank you. Of the things we think say are you, first is it the truth? Second is a fair to all concern. Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? Fourth, be beneficial to all concerns. Thanks, everybody, and thank you again, Ken, for joining us. It was fantastic hearing about everything you do. And everyone enjoy your week and we'll see everyone next week.
Thank you for having me. Bye.
Hey, Steve, I have a, I have a question for you. Do you mind staying for a second? I was just, I was just curious if you were going to be home this afternoon and I had something I wanted to drop off to you and Debbie.
Yeah. Yeah. What time did you want to swing by?
Today's Taco Tuesday. So I was like, oh, I'm going to be in the area. I might as well stop by. So what about, is five too early or do you think you'll be back by then?
Give me till 5:30.
5:30? Okay, sounds good.
All right, then I'll see you there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. We'll see you there. Bye.